We're already on it.
Yeah, Nick freaks anything like that, I see.
Yeah, I'm sure you're going to learn.
No, no, he's trying to make his way. Oh, no. Because I remember seeing it, almost just a building.
Condition.
And I've seen it all. No. I'm probably a little bound with my own. We never said we'd bring the man who's all coming. It was there. I'm nice. Oh, yeah. Oh, yes, it's all done. I don't, I don't.
No, I shared. Indeed.
They wouldn't. Well, I don't know. I think it was. Yeah. Was he reading it too?
Read it?
Yes.
Yes.
I couldn't see them.
It really shouldn't be like. I don't think so.
So it's going wrong. So somebody missed it.
I don't know.
I don't know. She says she hasn't seen it.
Then, then, well, I've seen a lot of people see this. What do you call it? You call it, so no, you know, some. I'm not sure.
Thank you. Yeah. Oh, no, no. It's a page.
Well, I think it's. Is there a question?
Sorry. Yeah.
Uh.
It's been a long time. Well, I don't know. Really, I'm not interested.
So. How many years of what I'll capture here?
Nice.
Hey, look.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Hey, what is this morning here?
I just need to go back to it.
I just want to say.
Be like, can you not have?
Okay.
That helps a bit.
It's a good thing.
Right.
Still, but I wish.
Until I'm out of.
Just chairs, wasn't it?
And yeah. Seriously, I don't say I'm having it. So, I mean. It's not. Taking a photo.
Although.
It's amazing. That's right. Yes, definitely. Big animals, for example. Right? Whatever besides that.
Yeah. You know, in some of the places.
It's been throughout. It was down to the children. He can win them this. Um. It was Debbie's old desk.
I know.
How much?
Well, I suggested, oh, sorry, South Day. I suggested we like chip and attend it with. To consider other avenues contribution. And yes, so.
Yeah, I was going to see him tomorrow anyway, so.
It's on dead. Best I have. And I don't have. Okay. She wants to give him their bail by Sunday. So this one, uh, first, please, I want to. Texts, yeah. Yeah. Speech is still a shame. More of. Anyway, it's our business. Beautiful.
This was, you're right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Perfect.
Dear ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this speech of the Operation Development Committee, multiple town council. Uh, well, Bush. I never said a word. It wasn't my fault. Was that you?
Yeah.
Don't do it again, will you? Don't think that it's there for you to use just because you're a speaker.
We're not there.
Uh, you're all very welcome to the meeting. Uh, we have apologies from.
I just done. Both mine.
Ben Bosway. I'm sort of Ben Bosway. Uh, everybody else is here, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Any declaration of interest from anyone? What is positions? Oh, right, that's how I like it. Uh, we have items three, public participation. I know the subject that the late people in the back want to discuss. And does anybody want to speak now? Well, in a public session? We, uh, we will be able to, whether we speak.
No, this is the chance to.
Oh, now it's for speaking. When we come to, uh. Item. Oh, where are we? I don't know. It's around the back.
Eight point two.
Two.
Eight point two, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. The only couple eight point two. Was the back. We're not in confidential sessions. Confidential sessions, so you'll be able to have a wonderful one as we get.
And. No, they really should speak now. But it's up to you, chat.
Yeah. I, I'm using my, my, uh. Better judgment, if you like. Do you people, would you like to speak now about the issue of an old bird that we've got on the agenda? Uh, and the, the lack of swings and fillers and a deserve.
If, if, if you were to speak now, you'd have, oh, not in limited time, but a, a good portion. If you were to speak later, you only have three minutes.
All right.
So up to you.
Sounds like now.
Yeah.
That sounds like a good idea to me.
Yep.
Um. Liz.
Uh, yeah, I don't know if people had a copy of my letter. Yeah. Last week, yeah. Um, I did write last year as well, and this has been on, ongoing for years since the change over from. The old, old foot to the new.
Yeah.
Um, they did promise us a recreation area for the children. They said they'd try and salvage some of the old. Equipment from the big green that was in the middle of Oldford before they built on there. But they took it away and we never saw it again. So we decided as a committee of tenants. Um, that we would raise money ourselves and we raised forty six thousand pounds and something. And we provided two small play areas and a larger play area in the centre of Oldford. Which the equipment is now not usable at all. Um, a lot of the adults went on it and broke a lot of it. Um, but there is the two small areas which are not really adequate. They're only for toddlers. So there's nothing besides the scans to switch there for the older ones. And that is in disrepair at the moment as well. There's apparently part of the, um, surface is missing. So we just thought that we would come tonight to see if there's anything that the council can do to help on this. Because they said about using the Maester Dray Recreation Area, which they've got to cross the main road. And that was there previously as well, when they had their own recreation area. Maester Dray was there then. And it's, I know it's got better equipment now, but they've still got to cross that main road to get there. So we would like to, as you could see in the letter, we're trying to get one back on Oldford for the children there.
Hey, I take it all members have read the letter that Liz has brought in from, uh, community, uh. Of the tenants association. So we're all aware of what will be coming up a bit later. Okay? Thank you, Liz. Thank you. Um. Well, wait, oh. The minutes of the last meeting. And they are as appendix. Who's helping? Okay. This is our sweetie, you've all got a copy, being general. Uh, I'll take page one. Page two. Page three. No question on those. Okay, well, Sally, sorry.
For post acceptance, chair.
Second. Okay. I've got a promoter and a seconder. All in favour, please.
Hands up.
Thank you. Um. Item five, landing buildings. Well, I just asked you, is there any matters arising? No, any three at all, or no?
No, that was queries for approving, but matters arise and why.
Yeah. Um, completeness, yeah, okay. Is it, are there any matters arising? You never, it's all right, Spider, Sally, you never thought I'd agree with him, do you? Do you?
Yeah. You, you didn't make any decisions, so, um.
No.
Well, you elect, you elected you and Sally and that was.
Okay. Landing, landing buildings, item five. Paul, is it you or is it you?
Richard. Um, no, Paul probably, there's one time all that day, but. Look, I did just want me to read it because there's a lot of work in there. Two hundred and three times out of there and then. Yeah, candid. Uh, yeah, so Town Hall Motten Bailey, uh, obviously we know the, the Town Hall. Uh, the Motten Bailey is as far on as we can get. It's all fenced off and the roofs are netted. Uh, the lads are actually there cutting league grounds today, trying to keep pot top of it. Uh, the Town Hall, um, the temp, it's been a juggling act with all the bookings we've had. It's been a really busy, busy month with bookings and events, et cetera. Um, so obviously I can't have builders walking in and out with tools, materials when there's bookings in the, in the main room. What we've got there, uh, the temporary toilet upstairs is done, finished, complete. Uh, and the propping will commence Monday stroke Tuesday next week. Now we can take that toilet out. We have the new one. We can then pop up and that will be started early next week. Monday stroke Tuesday, it has to be there. It's the only three day we've got in the building to save the entrance hall.
Any questions, folks?
Yeah, there's a quick question on toilet, Paul. Um, is that, have we thought about disability access for that up there?
There's already a disabled toilet downstairs. You walk past it to the ladies every day and so.
Yeah, I just wondered if people would like that. Thank you.
Any other queries? Okay. Uh, item five two. The Rossford inspection. So I guess, I hope every one of you have read these word by word.
Well, me and Paul went to the night, I like, so I hope you've all got. They're here for your information. Um.
Basically, uh, there's nothing on these reports that we were not aware of, aware of, aware of already. So basically we continue as we're doing, we'll take the, the highest risk, which at the moment of all mediums, which is good. We have no high risks anymore. We'll continue working down high priority to low priority, just continuing.
Yeah, so, and just to highlight, the two medium risks were, the fencing Dolly Vellin, which you've already agreed a quote to replace, so.
That will, sorry, that will be kicking off either next week or the week after. We're waiting for two maintenance gates to land in at the lads depot and we're away to go.
Brilliant.
And then the second one was the post at the country park. Yeah. And Paul is going to get quote from our usual playground repair and.
Yeah. Um, so if I could have, I should have brought my checklist with me, but my checklist is virtually identical to these. And you'll see when it comes to the tinware work at country park, we've been monitoring it on a weekly basis. Uh, so yeah, that is the, one of the next things to do will be that.
Great. That, um, very, very successful.
Yeah.
Mr Mayor.
We, we have no rents anymore.
Yeah, wouldn't mind if I just take one minute to congratulate Paul and our team. And, 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 Richard, you because. I've read that. I sat and read it all most of the afternoon. And I tell you what, there's a hell of a lot of councils in Wales who'd love to have a report like that.
Yeah.
Because it's been a job very well done. They're on top of the job all the time. And it must be said that we, we should be proud of, of what's happened in this, in that area of this town council.
Yeah.
I agree though, absolutely. I would second, second that.
Yeah.
Indeed.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Uh, five point three, folks, general update.
So, yeah, so as already mentioned, it's been hectic month this week. Uh, the town hall's been really busy, um, with their various functions, works, environment agencies, Clwyd Allens, Poweris Health Boards. There's Poweris County Council in there as we speak, and obviously we have the usual bookings that run alongside that. Uh, and also we've had the carnival, which, um, from our side, I thought went really well. I thought the parade worked well. Um, still a few issues, but we're going through a debrief tomorrow. Um, but yeah, from the running, the setting up, the parade side, I thought it all went reasonably well. Uh, we've had the continental market this weekend just gone. Um, we've rigged up a water pipe out of the back, oh, sorry, Sally.
Just want to come in on that. Everybody has said how clean the town was. And that's kudos to you lot as well, so thank you very much.
Well, basically, we.
Very much better than last year.
Well, last year was good. It was the first year that was, because we didn't know what was happening.
No.
Me, Ron Lee, assuming County Council would be doing the streets.
Yeah.
We found out after they only do them once in the morning and that's like five, six o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
So I didn't, I didn't know that at the time, whereas we've learnt our lesson from this. Uh, so yeah, so we, that was two years ago.
Yeah.
Uh, slightly better improvement last year. I think this year we nailed it.
Brilliant.
Um, we rigged the water pipe, sorry.
Sorry. I was just going to say, people whose social lives both and about continental market, thought it was fabulous, well set out, fantastic. The only bad thing that some of people have said, well, quite a few have said, was how expensive goods were to buy. And that's not your fault, but I think the compliments were far greater than the.
Yeah.
Goings on about how expensive everything is.
So, yeah, so in preparation for them, we had to rig a water pipe outside, oh, sorry, go on then.
Sorry, only a quick one on that as well. I had the same complaints. I was on the street all three days and, but as I said, in, I'm not going to mention shop names, but in some of our own chip shops.
Yeah.
Mini fish, small chips, and a small portion of peas is almost eleven quid.
Yeah.
So it was no, it was no dearer than your average takeaway.
Yeah.
But they see what they want to see in that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, so in preparation, we rigged up a water pipe out of what Phil did, because he's the plumber amongst us. Uh, rigged up a water pipe so the traders could get water. And then, as mentioned, we jumped on litter picking and bin, bin emptying from Friday afternoon. Uh, and throughout the weekend, from Friday dinner time, Saturday dinner time, Saturday evening, Sunday dinner time, Sunday evening. Uh, litter picking as we went and, uh, we had liaised with Martin, who did the street, who does the street bins for County Council. And thankfully he managed to get a road sweeper here for the Monday morning, because the only thing we can't collect is the rubbish that's blown under the stalls when they leave. But I had a cracking message off Martin with big thanks, um, with the, he had basically not very much to do on the Monday morning, which I was quite chuffed about. And I believe he was as well. Uh, and yes, a week on Sunday, we're getting ready for mayor's parade. Procession time to be going out this Monday, uh, ready for the mayor's parade. I've already mentioned the town hall. Uh, day centre, we've had the leaking radiators repaired. I've repaired the wall in the store, um, that the environmental health picked up, because the, the hinges at the back of the freezer damaged the wall. So instead of filling, sanding, repainting, be there for two or three days. I commandeered one of the hygiene boards that the builders left behind from upstairs and I've stuck it. It's completely suitable for kitchens, it's wipeable, it's a hygiene board, covered everything. I think I've nailed that one. And we've paperwork went off last, end of last week for the service of the kitchen equipment and the T R nineteen ducting cleaning. Um, the servicing of the equipment was already done. Well, fortunately the company went into receivership and we weren't able to get a service record of it. And obviously I can't, people won't take my word for it that it's being done, so we're having to have that done again. And I think that was everything that the environmental help picked up on, so I'm ahead on that. Uh, Maester Dray, we, me, Phil Rollinson and the town clerk met with Jamie from Lakeside to go through the S T R I report. Um, I was hoping to have the quotes here for you tonight, but Jamie messes latest afternoon to say he's just received the prices back off suppliers. So this is for the end of season works. Um, so hopefully I'll have a price for you by next, well, we probably have it by the end of this week, to be fair. Uh, again, this, myself and the town clerk met with Russ Cad for the cricket, to sort out where cricket storage that they're after. And I think we've come to a, a plan of action. Uh, and as of tomorrow, we start marking football pitches. It's come round quick, it doesn't seem like yesterday they finished, the pre-season friendlies of this Saturday, well, certainly Waterloo. So that will be marked tomorrow. Uh, playgrounds and open spaces, the cutting rotor continues and we are keeping on top of it this year. This dry weather has really helped, although I must admit, there's not a lot of grass to cut at the moment, it's not growing that quick. Um, we've had to put eighty three Bonny Buckley onto the rotor. To be honest, I didn't even realise we still owned the house and it was empty. It was a bit of a jungle, but I got pictures on my phone, we've done a great job there. Hopefully that will keep the neighbours happy for a bit. We've already mentioned the Rossper. Uh, we've cleaned and pressure washed all the little henvis playground. We've installed the benches at Maester Dray on the new pads that will complete that told you about, um, last month. And again, the fencing for Dolly Vellin, we're just waiting on a couple of gates to land and that begins, all being well, next week straight week after, we're waiting on delivery. Uh, public toilets, some or nothing. We repaired the Vandelaars door that was smashed the other month, that was all done. And finally, I've been round with the fire risk assessment block. We've done the day centre two weeks ago. We did the town hall today. We were hoping to get the tourist information done today, but it took us three hours to get everywhere round the town hall. And obviously I was governed with the booking in the mid afternoon to get all that done and then, so we've done the day centre in here. Uh, Elvin will, when he's checked his diary, will confirm the next day to do the tourist information. And that's it for me.
Okay.
Nice work, Paul.
Yeah.
Yeah. Everybody okay? Yeah. Okay, no questions? No. Thank you, Paul, thank you very much indeed.
Cheers, thank you.
Okay. Um. Item six. Uh, services, six one, the public toilets. Do you know the results of recent feedback exercises in public toilets? Who's going to start?
Uh, me. Um, uh, we decided to, um, I find toilets are used a lot. Um, we don't currently use it, we don't currently have the mechanism of county council use them. And that might be something that we look at in the future. It's actually data will give us more information about decisions we're making when it comes to budgets and things about toilets. But we, we put a feedback form on the wall in every sort of toilet with a Q R code. And this is just, this is just an update of where we got to with the feedback. Um, the form is very simple, it's, um, it's rate the toilets by stars, um, tell us your postcode, so we can get where you come from, uh, in the comments. Uh, we have had twelve responses, ten of which were five stars, two were four stars. So, um, a hundred percent responses were either good or excellent, which is fantastic. Um, I put some of the comments in the paper, that's appendix I, uh, it was very spotless, very clean and tidy, lovely and clean and modern, which was a great accolade to our cleaning staff. Um, the only issue that came up was there was no soap available. And that was, that was the only issue that came up. And, and posters wise, we can see that they spread from, you know, Shropshire, Paris, West Minas, even South Wales, so confirming that we are on a route. Um, we are the gateway to, to Wales, aren't we? And that's what we get. I had a phone call Monday, actually, um, a school was driving past, and they must do this a lot, but, um. They rang and said, can we use your public toilets? Because they'd driven past a couple of years ago and they were shut. We checked their open and there was like fifty schoolchildren all using the toilet. So, you know, it's a great space to go. Actually, we've got a, a day trip coming up.
We've got Dolly Town Council coming through.
The Dolly Town Council every year take their members to somewhere by the coast and on their way through and ask us to use their toilets and.
Yeah. Can I just, to guess, Rich? Um. I feel that we could do with a public toilet sign near where you pay for the car park.
Yes, um.
We just said exactly the same.
And, and I've said the ball as well, we need to sign off Broad Street about the toilets at the back of the market hall, because people on the street don't know where they are, so.
And it's like when I come to the office where people actually in the car park say to me, you know, excuse me, where are the public toilets?
Yeah, and, and I was surprised to see one of the comments on, on social media was that they didn't know they'll reopen. So we're going to do some work about re-applying that we actually have got two sets of public toilets thrown between nine and five, the T I C ones, and nine thirty, four thirty, the market ones, every day of the week.
Cool.
Uh, just, just to add that I saw, uh, uh, something in the visitors book in the C I C that said, um, great staff and great toilets. So that you can add that one to your list, that's five stars, I think.
You, Tranche?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I feel like more kudos is due to, to the staff who got us to this point. The path to this point has not been, you know, free from stones, let's say, but, but we are here now. And I, I did note that your people are grateful that we are providing that service, free, free at the point of use, as it were, as a public service. So, yes, some, something positive. It's good to celebrate the positives as much as we have to acknowledge that sometimes there are negatives we have to deal with too.
Okay. How are you doing? Um. Wheels on wheels.
So, um, you've got Wendy's report in front of you, appendix J. Um, Sally, you asked for a report.
Yeah.
Hopefully this gives you more information. Um, I can break it down if you want me to, but.
It's fine.
So basically, uh, in June, uh, the service did three hundred and ninety one meals. Um, sixty two percent were either outside service, thirty seven percent were served for the in-house day centre attendees. So I don't know if you're aware that when the days that the Haven use it, they also utilise the service. Um, the service generates two thousand six hundred and fourteen pound in income against some modest catering costs. Uh, weekly demand has remained poorly consistent. Uh, there was a drop in one week, um, because of the, um, they wanted sandwiches as opposed to hot food, so they're taking their bank of sandwiches are less expensive. Uh, and gross profit remains healthy.
Yeah, that's good.
Um, we, we do know anecdotally that the service is, um, some of, some of the people who use it unfortunately have passed away or have moved into Nares Malvern. So we know that there's, there's been a temporary leak, but, um, we're going to, we're going to re-apply that again. It's a great service, um, you know, delivered by volunteers. Uh, we'll, we'll be able to advertise that.
Sorry?
Um, just to say thank you to Wendy for providing a proper report on this, we've not had one for a long, long time. So, yeah, I was just going by the whole report and Wendy was just coming in saying, yeah, it's very great.
Yeah.
I just needed a better.
This is the standard that I would be expecting and going forward.
So, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, markets, we sleep.
Um, just my half of Kim, and the markets are going well. We had another new person move into one of the stores downstairs. Um, as we know, one of the biggest stores at the back is, is, was going to be going completely at the end of August. They've actually changed their mind now and are staying with a limited stall. Um, and there's going to be some rejigging, um, it sounds like, um, fruit and fridge are rejigging and then moving to the back. Which would be great, because actually that would bring more people into the body of the market hall, because that's what generates, yeah, more food that we can get at that market hall is, is great.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of, um, inquiries, yeah, great. Um, the street market as well has also increased, we've had a couple of new traders, um, arrive. So, um, yeah, we seem to be on the upward trajectory when it comes to markets. I understand that they, they go at this.
Yeah.
Um, so we're, we're at other peak, we're, we're on the way up. So, um, we just need to keep capitalising on it, keep back, keep appetising it and we'll, we'll carry on.
Sound a bit more vocal now, isn't it? Okay, committee finance. Sorry, so.
Just a question, off the top of your head, do you know when the next market meet, traders meeting is? Have we got a date for it?
Yeah, it's, 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 it's bi-monthly, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next month.
We, um.
The mayor's taking notes.
I've already asked that to stop.
Um, we, um, I, I don't know if people realise, but, um, the market's actually open on Monday during the continental market and the traders, um, were.
Sunday.
Yeah. Sunday. Yeah, sorry, Sunday. I thought I said Sunday, isn't it? Um, and it was open exactly on Sunday and they were very complimentary about the, the, the Alan, that's great.
Good to see, and in fact, some of the market traders said to me yesterday, uh, Monday, sorry, that Sunday was their best day of the weekend.
Fantastic. And we're, we're working with them in part of the market meetings to update some of the signage around the building that's slightly out of date. Um, and you've got, um, some designs and things coming to finance and governance next week. Um, so once those are approved, we can get some proper signage out the front and, and try and highlight the market after and push people, push people on Broad Street, Down Wall Street, in the market.
Oh. So I'm sorry, I, sorry, I under dated my diary, but I haven't got it.
I will, um, I'll get him to confirm the dates, Sally will serve that as a reference.
Okay. Um. Finance. Will you finance?
Yeah, well, you have the biggest budget of all the committees in terms of, um, property and things. It's just that, you know, you get this every month, but it, it's good that you can, you can look it on and see.
property and things, it's just that, you know, you get this every month, but it, it's good that you can, you can look it on and see. Um, currently, there's not that much with overspends. Uh, it seems to be on track, um, there seems to be an overspend on meals, on wheels in terms of HRC, so we'll have to investigate that one, but, um that all this into your mind, of course, the biggest overspend, you all notice, is a lot of daily repairs and maintenance, it's a duty with fencing works. Um, we are going to, you have to take money from reserves to plug that gap from, you know. That the budget was set in January, and we did get the phone, so the budget was set.
Okay, go to the left.
Yeah, sure.
Just a quick one on this finance pitch, do you think it's the bottom of Bruttonton Sanctuary at all? I know Vanessa's waiting on that, so.
Yeah, we discussed it at the last meeting.
I'm sorry.
Uh, no, it's fine, I, I can read, go over it, and so unfortunately the town council signed a deed of dedication with the town council back in nineteen ninety, my, my memory says to be well, it's on my desk. Um, basically, it commits us to pay a sum yearly and it's indexed to RPI. Um, so we have to pay what that's the three hundred pounds.
And it's in perpetuity.
And it is in perpetuity, um, the last meeting, actually, we did discuss, didn't we, about efficacy, we could break it, um that's something to do with this, isn't it, but, um, uh, yeah, it, it's one of those costs that, yeah, the council signed up to. I, it's, you know, letting this not in our area. It used to be when it was the borough, and there's some stuff that goes back to like the fifties, but, uh, the recent bridge we bought, it is in mine. Sorry, I missed that.
Okay. Project and new developments. What do we know about those? All right. Few things by paper with the rest, why would you go to the first paper and then with the second paper? Ah, that's very well. Right. Town Hall transformation.
Yeah, let's just give you an update, um, we submitted the expression of interest to the Heritage Lottery on the eighteenth of June. And we're waiting to get back with them within, within three months or so. But it was a very comprehensive bid that we put together. Bid, if I remember rightly, was around four point two million for this building, um, with a, the expression we put in was a ninety percent grant, so we have to find the remaining ten percent. Um, but we can neutralise grants now and sources to find that ten percent, so, um it's nothing, it's just updating the fact that things are moving forward in the right direction when it comes to the refurbishment project, I, I developed a town, I didn't want you to think that we, we were ignoring it, it was full in town and bought that up and to do this.
Okay, everybody okay with that, Ronan? Okay, I agree too, open estate. I think you've all seen the letters to the town clerk, uh, and to the mayor rather, uh from the pressure of all community association. Um, I made no vote about it, this has gone on far, far too long, um. Shall I say, everybody from Powers County Council, Clewed Allen, Town Council, you name it over the years has been involved and all agreed and said, yes, 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 and nothing has happened, um. I, I have to express my, uh dispondency with it, if you like, Sally came first, then Nick.
Yeah, it's actually Nick first, like.
Oh, Nick, okay. Uh, I did put a comment on my Welsh Bulls report on this letter this morning, but I'm a hundred percent behind the reinstatement of that playground. It desperately needs to be done, but as the letter says, the estate is the responsibility of both Clewed Allen housing associate and Powers County Council. Now, Powers County Council were reported just the other day as having a five point three million pound surplus this year, out there like in the council tax. And everybody is fully aware of the millions of pounds that Clewed Allen has spent on Nyaeth Maldwin, which, on which they've done a fantastic job. But why are the kids of Oxford treated as second class or third class citizens? You know, it's not as if they haven't got the money, we haven't.
Yeah.
The town, we don't own it. I think, you know, we can fully support it, and I, and I'm a hundred percent behind that. But I think it's down to Clewed Allen and Powers County Council to come up with the money, they've had long enough. Sorry, I didn't mean to get a bit passionate.
Really? You'll get passionate.
Yeah, Charlie?
Um, I was just going to suggest Phil, that maybe we should have a meeting with Clewed Allen, Powers County Council and Town Council, I know we've said it before. I know we have, but this meeting needs to happen, it's like you say, this has gone on long enough, right? We as a council can't afford to put it up there ourselves. So whether we actually come up with a fundraiser and support that fundraiser with them um, to get this up and running, but something that does need to be done, but I think we need a a firm meeting including Allen and Powers County Council, the three of us all together. And seeing if we can bash this about and have any way we can, so I can get so.
Okay, sure.
We know that for years Phil has been banging on about this, year in, year out, getting nowhere. Simply because people on our council have been coming up with stupid ideas of, well, they can go and play at Mysore Dray, they can cross the main road, these little toddlers. How stupid are people? We've had promise after pro, sorry Nick, we've had promise after promise after promise for what, twenty or thirty years about this, and nothing has happened. Sally, when you say fundraiser, how many years do you expect a fundraiser to take? To, to take.
Before we are only just going to ask this, and we can't offer any cost into this playpark at all.
No, but the one we did, when did we do it, when would you know? The one we did way back, well, Cal was younger and I was thirty-five now, so.
Yeah, that's thirty, right, isn't it?
Yeah.
We raised ourselves forty-six grand in there, yeah, that's it, with probably going to, with laundry money.
We, we, we can only be looking about a hundred grand.
Yeah, and that's just forever, whereas as Nick has explained, called the city, yeah, on that quite a bit of money, and when they got their fingers out and did something, I'm sick of the promises, just as.
You're right, I estimate, you're doing the town.
But, but just to say, look, you know, that's a capital cost, that's a one-off, but it's actually the, it's the perpetu- perpetuity maintenance, you know. Six hundred pounds a roster reports cost, I mean, I have to get members in, yeah, and, you know, it, it, it's it's the longer gen, it's the maintenance that goes, insurance, it's so expensive to run a playpark, we run six.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think we're looking to take on seven, but that's a decision for you guys, um, say it.
Yeah, give it tranch.
Thank you Chair, yes, I'd like to second Nick's enthusiasm on this one. Uh, and contribute towards the consensus that seems to be forming, you know, Oldford is one of the more deprived areas of town, no, no fault of its own. And I don't think we can advocate loudly enough for the, the children of that area to have the, the childhood and, and the future that they deserve, so, so I, I very much agree with the, uh, suggestion of holding those who are responsible accountable for, for letting them down.
Yeah.
Mr Mayor.
Uh, thanks, thanks Chair. Yeah, I, I mean, we can act as facilitators, our ability to uh, actually do very much is rather restricted. Uh, as I understand it, there were positive covenants in the land transfer that requires them to maintain a, a, uh some sort of a recreation facility for the children, that, that was something they were doing, it's lapsed and it, it, it's been the dead loss for a long time. It seems to me that the person or the, the party with the ability to enforce the covenant and to require specific performance of whatever it is they, they're required to do to comply with it, probably Powers uh, to, to Clewed Allen. Um, so I think it, maybe we need to be putting pressure on them. Who in turn can put pressure on Clewed Allen. Uh, but for us to step in and do something off our own bat, so to speak. I think would be problematic, I don't think we have any powers to do that. But we, we can certainly try and move things on, and Sally's suggestion is probably quite a good one.
Yes. Uh, yeah, Tom Clark has said that it's not just a matter of, of reinstating the playpark, but there's the other, so there's the maintenance side of it to look at. There's the insurance side of it to look at, et cetera, et cetera. The same applies to Nyaeth Maldwin.
Yeah.
There are going to be maintenance costs there and the facilities for the people who live there, and there's no kids there, they're elderly people, most of them. But there are, as we saw last week, wonderful facilities which will be up kept. And I know those people are paying quite a substantial rent to live in that particular building, but all the people of Oxford pay rent as well.
Yeah.
And I do believe there's the part of the rent that we pay in Oxford is toward, well, the Clewed Allen side of it, is towards provision of facilities.
It's a good idea.
Well, we have service charges for the upkeep of the grounds, but they never ever put any recreation facilities there whatsoever, we, we've done that.
Which is a thing that you're in their responsibility as far as I'm concerned.
That's high.
Legally, it is an obligation legally on Clewed Allen to provide play areas to a certain size, depending on how many houses are there, it's a certain size based on how many hundreds of houses in it. Uh, but that, that is a legal requirement, Phil, for that distinction.
I don't want to say anything new, but just really supports everything that's been said so far, I think it's an important responsibility of, um uh, a local council like ours to be the voice of the people.
Yeah.
Uh, to those in authority, and we need to be both forceful and united in pressing the case for Oxford, I think, with, uh, both Powers County Council, and I think we can, uh, at least copy Clewed Allen into whatever we send to Powers County Council, so that's, uh, they are aware of that. But, um, um, you know, it, this, this has gone on for ridiculously long time, we're quite right.
I'm glad to hear you say that, because it had, I, I, I'd love to bring it up, but at the end of the day, let me, let me take you back a little while. Uh, probably four years ago, five years ago. We had a meeting in, in Oxford at the play area of councillors of the, of the castle board, and the county councillors and county council. Right, and Clewed Allen. Uh, it was quite a, it was a hell of a meeting, because everybody was in agreement, right? Uh, and they, Clewed Allen agreed quite simply that they would be willing to, the, the grass area alongside the scancers pitch. They would be willing to add that into the, the, uh, the lease we've got. Uh, the pepperoni lease that Town Council takes for that piece of ground where the scancers pitch is on. They would add that to that grass area into that, into that lease, just add it in, uh, and they, they were fully supportive of this, we haven't, uh, had any mitigating tips. I'm sorry, every time we, we, we stop, we're going to get somewhere, it just goes dead and it's quiet and this and the other. Uh, I'm very grateful to Graham Breeze, our county councillor for Walsall, uh, to, for attending tonight. I'm very disappointed that our other two county councillors have not attended tonight, because they know it's on the agenda and it's a very important matter. But at the end of the day, you know, I, I, it was all agreed that they would put that into our lease and we could take over from there, and the idea was that the three smaller play areas that was, there was, the estate then. Uh, we would take those out, and the equipment of them, we would bring down to that grass area. And the council would supply more play equipment, and that would be a complete area for the children to play with in, in Oxford. Nothing happened, Sally.
Chair, may I propose that Clark maybe looks into setting this meeting up with three three of us and alongside the tenants association as well? Whether we can get a meeting set up quite quickly to discuss this?
Well, funny you should mention a meeting. I had a phone call this afternoon, and they, it's, it's from Clewed Allen, they had seen this was on the agenda, and thanks to my Welsh Bulls reporting. And I am initially just meeting with them next week.
Right.
Um, I'm sure I can get together a, a bigger meeting of the, of the three partnerships, plus the tenants association.
I think that needs to happen going forward, yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it is, it comes out, I, I already said to the town clerk if necessary, you will make a report on that meeting to the full council, to recite.
And I suggest that meeting.
But that meeting is already, yeah, on the go.
And I suggest the full meeting be minuteed verbatim as well.
Yeah. So.
So everything, everything that is said is recorded.
Yeah. So it's minute.
But I'll go for the meeting next week initially, just to, it's, I also as well, so we can, yeah, talk a bit more and work out the history of the, of the project and the mindset, and then, and then I'll set up a meeting between the three, three bodies and the association.
I'd like to be involved.
So, what members are being asked tonight is to support the view of the letter from the treasurer of the, uh, Oxford Pen Tenants Association.
Yeah.
And to support the association in making sure that we don't drop it off again.
No.
Keep at it, bone at it every month and this and the other, and, uh, we get something done for the children in Oxford.
Absolutely.
And quite honestly, I've said it before and I say it again. Oxford is by far the biggest estate, uh, housing estate in Walsall. And it's got by far the biggest number of children.
Yeah.
And it's the one area that's got no provision whatsoever, we have to deal with this.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, it's all right when somebody gets hurt in an accident or something, and then all of a sudden I'll help, everybody wants to do things then. Too late.
Yeah.
We have to carry on with this and get it sorted. And the town clerk, uh, and I will go and see, we'll, we'll meet with Clewed Allen whenever this meeting is. And it's, we'll make a report to the full council at the end of the month, Nick.
I, I, again, I totally support everything that's been said, hundred percent behind it, however. As the town council, we cannot fund it.
Yeah, can't.
Yeah, we can give our full support, but we cannot fund it, we haven't got the money, we've been promising the town a new skateboard park for the last five years, and what's happened?
Nothing. Same thing.
Yeah.
So, if, if. Yeah, sorry Phil, I suppose.
So it's support without financials.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have fundraisers, it's not a problem, but they'll have our support, but we can't actually put it ourselves.
So, yeah, I have to say.
I'm sure this will not be.
I prefer not to talk about who's paying for it at the moment, because that's something we've got to negotiate. I don't want to tie our hands together and, you know, or whatever, so. I'm purely in, in the whole park of saying we have to, we want the town council to fully support this, this move to get a play area for the children in Oxford. And we'll take, we'll, we'll get into the mechanics of how we're going to achieve that thereafter. And, and that's what I hope the council will support at the end of the month.
I just want the tenants to know that they've fully got the town council's, um, support on this, so just that know that you've got our support on a hundred percent.
Definitely, yeah. I, I don't want to be, I don't want to be the, the dinger and semantics, but so if the committee decide to support this this evening. It will be a recommendation to full council, full council will make the decision.
Yeah, that's fine.
I just want to make sure that, yes, yeah.
But I'm sure the full council will be more than the people to back, I'm saying no more.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Yeah, I can say.
I'll second Sally's proposal, okay?
Yeah. Okay, those in favor, please show. That's all the committee unanimous.
A David back.
What's Steven said?
Hands up.
Yeah. It's unanimous, okay?
That's good.
Thank you, thank you members, thank you very much. And I'll pass that round, Bill, to just, uh, pass it round and let somebody have a look at it. Those are the good days. Um. Okay, GIC solar battery installation. Deal with that, you will pull.
Um, me, um, very often. So, um, you, you may have known, but we were successfully getting, I have to do tweeting now, I have a date to report. Um, we were successfully getting a grant um, from the Windfall Midwell Energy Trust, um, thank you to, um, Ben, after I pushed that through. Uh, the grant is for a solar panel and battery installation and scaffolding works and tourist information centre, and the full grant was awarded was twenty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-five pounds. Um, uh, basically, we have to pay for it and then claim the money back from, from the you know, for such a grant, um, we have, I, I need until October to claim it back. Um, so, but we need to get cracking with the project, and, uh, so we've had two quotes uh, through, um, that came as part of the grant application. Um, one's for company A and one is for company B. Company A's quote came to twenty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-six. Um, company B's quote came to twenty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-five. Um, so company A's was slightly more expensive, uh, I mean, the, the full grant we've been awarded was twenty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-five pounds. So it's basically tonight to decide maybe, uh, company A or company B.
Nick, may I ask, and I'm picking Paul's brains here. Uh, has the predicted major roofing repair work be considered before we install these panels?
Yes.
It's the best I've ever done this, well. Best popular way, we should write it.
Um. Yes, we've had it in confirmation from Andrew, the surveyor, that this work is in line with the conditions save report, so will not be an impact on the building, I have that in email Monday.
Thank you.
Basically, it would just need to decide.
Anybody else?
To more of the company to.
Company H, or J, company A, or company B, both.
This is for the tourist information centre, solar panels and battery works on top of the, so, uh, top of the tourist information centre. So actually the quote includes a fifteen kilowatt, um, so installation of thirty-five solar panels on, um, two inverters, thirty kilowatts of battery storage, and includes the scaffolding, all the works and all the commissioning and so on, it's the day really.
So.
So it's a hundred percent.
So that is, that's fixing the roof, but instead of.
It's not fixing the roof. It's, it's scattered and put it on the roof and the battery system, which then. The T I C will feed into, so our electric costs of the T I C. Decrease and the public toilets and then we can sell back the energy factor.
Yeah, I understand that, but what happens when we have to fix that roof?
Andrew's report, Andrew's confirmed that the works to the roof are not affected by the solar panels being on the roof. So the solar panels being on the roof won't need to be taken off to do the work.
Taken out and reinstored. That's not going to cost so more money. Once that's done, that's done.
That's what I just.
And he went to fix everything while they're on.
Yes, that's what he's going. Okay, so I need to.
David French.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Now, I'm grateful for this from the town clerk. Sure, you all know this will improve our environmental credentials, save the townspeople some money. And, and just take a step towards Welshful own energy security. I wanted to ask, is, is there any significant difference between company A, company B? Should we simply pick the company that's marginally cheaper? Is there anything to be considered in terms of? You know, is one a, a local company? Is, is, is one highly rated, et cetera, et cetera? Do, do we know any details like that?
They're both local.
Have you used them before?
No. It's just, it's just unfortunately, we didn't get the grant award back until, what was it, June. And this runs out in October, so we need to get cracking. And of course, you don't meet in August, so it's, it's just being the rush.
Okay.
But it's full council level of the tender. So if you want, you can defer it to full council and we can, you can have the quote in front of you to read them and sign that if you want. Not a problem.
I'll let that.
Sure.
Thank you. Do the quotes include V A T?
Yeah, so I, I've given you the non-V A T figure, which is the one. If you want, you can, you can defer it until full council and have the quotes.
You need it sorted, don't you?
But you, full council make the decision anyway. It's, it's only next, it's in two weeks' time, so it's not, it's not a bad issue.
Here's the figures again, Rich.
Yeah, so company A, sorry, I didn't give you the paperwork in advance. Company A is twenty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-six. The company B is twenty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-five. So the grant's for twenty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-five. So company B would be for the full hundred percent grant. You work with company A, we'd have to pay slightly more above it.
I knew you were going to share.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I'll second. Anybody calls? Only favor, hope, please.
Hands up.
David French, your hand up.
That's, that's interesting.
Hey, Ken.
Thank you. I have to say that this is not the usual way we would be doing grants. This was a grant that grate, gratefully thanks to Ben, but grants have to be done by officers. To fully understand what the different, you know, the impacts on work, maintenance, scheduling and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
This is, this is, you know, same thing as the honesty incident.
Okay, well, item nine, folks, is, is in the next meeting. I confirm it's planned for the tenth of September at six thirty. In the chamber here.
Cheers, Gary.
And now I will have to ask the members of the public to leave and we're going into confidential session for ten minutes or so.
Should that be all this, actually?
No, we don't have. We don't need. And you'll, you'll have to vote actually to remove the public.
Do you have?
To remove the public.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We've reviewed public chants.
All in favour?
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you very much, folks. Okay. We have, like, yeah, shut the door.
Oh, hang on.